to provide that to us, and I don't think putting this on for action this evening fits into that.
And districts all over the state are making decisions based on new information coming, and I think we need to be responsive to that information and what our families need from the school system. I mean, we have to be able to adapt, and we have been doing that, I feel like, successfully throughout this entire pandemic of quickly getting new information and making decisions and keep transitioning through this. And it's part of what we've been doing all year long. I don't see why this is any different tonight to expect action, given the new information that we've had and changes from the, you know, changes from guidelines from the CDC to our own state guidelines to the toolkit. We've got to be nimble and do what's right for our families, and that's all I'll say.
So my understanding is, as Chair Woodbury pointed out, we're discussing amending the agenda and not the content exactly of what we'll be amending. The question, is that correct, Chair?
It is. Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer. So if there are any more questions or discussion-
You've got to move it from discussion, action to discussion and leave it at discussion?
No, the motion was to include it on action because it was listed as a discussion, and in my estimation was inadvertently left off as an action item when it was added as discussion.
I don't, though, I think what's on the table right now is, do, is, do we want to amend the agenda to include an action item on this?
And if there's any question or discussion about adding the action of the reopening of schools, which we, you know, to the superintendent-
So violation of the CDC recommendations covered under discussion.
So, so-
Yes, we'll be discussing that. Questions you have will come up during the discussion at discussion time, right? Are we still have an action item on something that might possibly violate CDC regulations?
No, no, that's, that's not, that's not correct, Board Member Brainerd, but we'll move on, and I'll go ahead and ask for the motion, the, so we were at caution and discussion on the motion that Board Member Crowley had, so-
And Joan seconded.
Yes, and Dana seconded. So all in favor?
So are we doing question and discussion?
So we've just finished, did you have another point to be made? We would finish it. Okay, go ahead before we-
So, so if it, if we move it to, to action, that action could mean that we could move to have a vote at, at any time, not necessarily tonight, but at any time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we can set a date to have a vote?
If we have it on there, yes, if we have it on there for action, we could do something tonight. Obviously, maybe the board has decided to do something different, I don't know. But I, I was under the same impression that the Leo was, is that it was on for, for discussion and action for tonight, and when I did not see it on there, I just felt like it might have just mistakenly gotten left off, so.
Deion, you have something to say?
I was gonna say, yes, I mean, if it's on for, there's not a specific action that's being recommended yet. It's possible that the board could take action to table this discussion or to have a special meeting at another date to make, to take action at that time, so.
Okay, so-
Can you call the vote, please?
Board Member Brainerd, I think that that's left up to the Chair to call the vote, so I will, and once we get it clarified, I know you can't see here, but we just had some members trying to get some clarity, so I appreciate your perspective.
Can't see any of you at all? All we see is the podium, so we cannot see any votes that are happening.
Yeah, okay, we're, we're getting there. Thank you for your patience. So the, I think Board Member Parker had the last point before we move into taking the vote on the motion that is to amend the agenda to add an action item around the reopening of schools, and so all in favor of that? All right.
So the vote, could you please repeat the motion?
The, the motion is to add an action item for the reopening of schools.
And Chair Woodbury, would do you mind calling all opposed just for the record of who voted in favor and who voted against, please?
Okay, so you've already taken a record of those who, for, okay, all opposed.
Aye.
Is, myself, Board Member Bohannon, Board Member Parker, Board Member Brainerd, Board Member Mott Singer.
Sustained, I'd like more information.
Chair Woodbury, can I just, can I just ask, I'm sorry, just, it seemed like some Board Members have not voted, so could we just, can we just say aye, or could we do something, but, you know, we need to go on record, you know-
Yeah, I think Deion had taken your name and leaked in Board Member-
Right, but I don't, I don't know what the, oh, some people didn't vote.
There, there were five people who voted in against the motion. I did not see Ms. Calvert-Hayes or Ms. Kaplan.
She said she was sustaining, and then-
I would, I need more information.
I need, I need some more, too.
Especially from our teachers.
Okay, thank you. So that, then, then, then the vote, the motion fails.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda item is special recognitions, and we're going to have Andrew Kraft come up, and I will be assisting with the outstanding graduation awards.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent McManus. Every year, the state of North Carolina recognizes the schools across the state that have the highest graduation rates, and we're excited tonight to let you know that four of our schools met that criteria. We want to introduce their school leaders to you tonight so that they can be recognized. So the first school to meet that criteria, I want to introduce you Assistant Principal Kia Neder is here to join us. Atkins High School had a graduation rate of 100%, and we're very proud of their work. The next school that we want to introduce you to, Principal William Nguyen at John F. Kennedy High School. Kennedy had a graduation rate of 96.4%. The next school that we're excited to recognize is actually two schools with one principal. Principal Joey Hurl is here from early college and middle college, both of whom were recognized for high graduation rates. Early college had a graduation rate of 100% and middle college a graduation rate of 98%. Thank you for your time.
The next round of special recognitions is our board spotlight video, which will highlight Women's History Month, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Science Fair, and we're all in this together.
March is Women's History Month, a celebration started in 1981 when Congress authorized and requested the President to recognize Women's History Week. Over time, that designation was changed to Women's History Month. The month is meant to highlight and honor the contributions of women to events in history and contemporary society. The month aims to encourage the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history. How have women been historic within WSFCS? Well, look no further than our Board of Education. In November of 2018, voters approved a Board of Education that was made up entirely of women for the first time in history. Another historic moment was when the Board chose Meliche Woodbury to be the first African-American female Chair of the Board. While that Board has changed, its newest member, a male, still revels in the remarkable milestone that was accomplished by those women.
Serving on a Board with such a remarkable group of women has been an absolute pleasure. One of the, the important pieces of the time that we live in is an understanding that women have been making contributions for quite a while, and it's important that we are recognizing the importance of having women serve in, in all types of positions. And serving on a Board that is overwhelmingly majority women has been very, very exciting, and it's been, it's been very rewarding. I'm a product of this district, and so most of my teachers growing up were women. Some of the teachers that have had the biggest and most positive effect on me have been women, and I was raised by a fantastic woman, who is my mother. And so to me, Women's History Month is, is extremely important, but also it's important that even beyond the month of March, that we're celebrating women and their accomplishments.
WSFCS celebrates our Region Five Science Fair winners. We have 11 students who placed regionally, four of which placed first, second, or exemplary in their division. That means they proceed on to the State Science and Engineering Fair. These young scientists have shown a steadfast dedication to science and the love of learning, even in the midst of COVID. We are proud of their hard work and cheer them on as some of them move on to the state competitions, which start later this month and continue in April.
And we're gonna do a collaboration, we're making one big picture. So today, I am subbing here at Union Cross Elementary, and I have had a wonderful, wonderful day. I got to meet some new friends, and they were, they were excited to have me there. I was excited to be there. Oh, my new friends, you're doing a great job, thank you! As you know, our students come first, and this has been a great day helping out and just getting in here and looking at the schools and being with the teachers and just getting that day-to-day feeling of what they do and be able to participate in what they do every single day.
I mean, it's awesome for people in admin roles to come and hang out with us and see how it is day-to-day in the classroom setting with the students, and so seeing like firsthand the interactions and getting the smiles and the wonderful, you know, all the positive feelings that we get every day.
And we appreciate them so much, and this is just our way of working together and giving back to the schools.
It has been absolutely amazing. The first week that it came into, to start, I actually had two second-grade teachers who came down with COVID and had to be out for 14 days. So just giving that peace of mind was just incredible.
Hey, Liam, did you get hand sanitizer?
Hi, guys.
I am a teacher at heart. I love being with the students, so I was very excited when Ms. McManus had brought this initiative to us, and I'm still excited. I have three more days to do this. This is my first day, and I had such a great time that I'm waiting for my next three days. I know it's just gonna be awesome. It's my fault.
Just thanks so much to Trish McManus for that idea. You know, we, we are all in this together, and I really do feel like that our district has pulled that together really well. They've just exemplified that to support the schools by promising a day or two days to come out and support us when we're in need, and that, that's just been incredible.
Yes, we are all in this together. We all have to work together for the, for the success of our students, and that's what we're here for, that students come first.
The next item on the agenda is the public comments on agenda items. This time is reserved for comments only on the agenda for tonight. We cannot discuss any personnel or student personal issues. We ask that, at this time, you are considerate and kind in your comments. Do realize that your comments will come to me as the Chair, and although we cannot respond, now a staff member may try to respond to questions if possible, and you will have three minutes to make your comments. The first person on tonight's comments is Frankie Petrie.
At the beginning, with all your discussion, I'm not sure if this is when I'm supposed to speak or not. What I wanted to talk about was the return of the kids to school. Is that appropriate now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Again, thank you all for all your hard work you've done this past year. I can't imagine all the struggles you have gone through, as well as parents, children, and the community. We do appreciate it. We, as a community, though, need to get these kids back in school. Governor Cooper said today, every kid in North Carolina should be back in school at the earliest moment. He said that today at 2:00. He said five days a week, by the way. Over 41 districts are already back in school full-time or going back in the next two weeks, so we need to catch up. There is one thing I'd like to ask, because I've heard this from a couple teachers. There's some clarification. CDC is saying three feet, but some of the people are saying, that's great, but when they go to lunch, they need to do six feet, and they'll have to rearrange their rooms to accommodate. And then, when they take their mask off, they're not going to be able to talk while they eat because their mask is off. Well, I find that child abuse if they can't talk. I'm sorry, when I was in school, that's when you talked to your friends, that's when you socialize, that is part of learning to become a successful adult. But this three-foot, six-foot needs to be clarified, and it needs to be uniform throughout every school in Forsyth County. Again, thank you so much for all you do. We just want our kids back. I'm a great-grandma, so trust me, I have great-grandchildren in the system, so I want them back, and all the others as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next, we have Val Young.
Good evening, Board Chair Woodbury, Superintendent McManus, and Board Members. We have one solid year of surviving a pandemic. I hope we never have to survive another pandemic. So today, I came with some hopes and some wishes. I hope that we continue to be vigilant when it comes to our safety protocols. That means wearing masks at all times. I put a pin in there and thank the community for safe schools, for providing N95s to all our teaching teams, to our education team. I hope that our superintendent, the district, provides a social-emotional program and tools that our students, our parents, our families, our education team can use, because I think at this moment, we all need to heal so we can be whole. I hope that all schools have updated HVAC systems, because it's important to have filtration during this time. I wish that we could honor every superhero that has gone the extra mile during this pandemic, and that includes our ladies and gentlemen in the Child Nutrition Department, who during pandemic did not complain, did not whine, when they were in danger and we didn't know what to do, they still went out and they cared our children. For that, I wish we could honor them. I hope we continue to move forward using data to inform us, because what it comes down to is that we all want to be safe, we all want to see tomorrow, and we all want to survive this pandemic.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Beal.
I realize I haven't spoken in public in a year. Good evening. I'm Nicole Beal, Director of Student Services at Reynolds High School, and I'm speaking to you as a counselor, educator, parent, wife of a teacher, and member of the community. I consider myself an advocate specifically for public school students and educators. I have a diagnosed anxiety disorder that deals with health anxiety. I have been terrified for a year, and I am so grateful for my vaccine. I have been a proponent of Plan C, Plan B, and now Plan A. I believe that once every, every educator has had the opportunity to get vaccinated, we should be in school every day. I've spent the last year watching more school board meetings than in my previous 17 years as an educator. I've listened to public comment, and I have been angry to the point of tears. To be clear, I do not think educators have been failing children. We want children in school. I have been personally offended by those who seem to blame educators for all the societal problems that became so apparent during the pandemic. For the record, there were major achievement gaps among students before we went remote, and student mental health concerns were increasing and scary. However, the pandemic has made all of those things worse and more obvious to the public at large. I have not spoken before because I felt as an educator with an office, I didn't have a right to speak where my colleagues are more on the front lines. My views have evolved. I have had concerns. I was scared for my husband in a classroom, and I was scared for my own child who I sent back in person. I kept waiting for him to get sick or her, and so far, they have been well. I recognize not everybody is ready, and I am grateful that we've been able to remain remote. I'm incredibly grateful for vaccinations, and I'm personally grateful to Wiley Middle School for their education of my own daughter. As a high school counselor, I spend fourth quarter trying to drag some seniors across the finish line. No amount of phone calls, Zooms, or documentation will replace my ability to go get a student in a classroom and cheer them on in person. I know that coming back more days a week this final quarter will not solve all of our problems, but I do think it's a necessary step. We asked parents to trust us when we sent students home because it wasn't safe, and now we need to follow through on our duty to bring students back now that it's safer. One of my favorite questions to ask as a counselor is, did you make the best decision you could with the information that you had at the time? That information has changed. Being at home was never the best option, it was the only option, it was not a permanent one, it was the only one. We can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Alan Daniel. Thank you for making sure we're safe.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of board, Superintendent McManus. People have asked for information, so here's a little information. This is the latest CDC recommendations. Middle school students and high school students should be at least, of course, it would go over a lot of speed, six feet apart in communities where transmission is high if cohorting is not possible. Cohorting is when groups of students are kept together with the same peers and staff throughout the school day to reduce the risk for spread throughout the school. This recommendation is because COVID-19 transmission dynamics are different in older students. That is, they are more likely to be exposed to SARS-CoV-2 and spread it than younger children. Back in October, I addressed the board on the day that we hit a record in Winston-Salem Forsyth County of 85 cases. Dr. Old was on Zoom that night and said that was an aberration. He was correct. It went sky-high from there. As of today, we are at 169 cases per 100,000 in the population in Forsyth County. Less than five per 100,000 is considered low. Five to 20 is moderate. Excuse me, less than five is lower. Five to 20 is low. 20 to 50 is moderate. 50 to 200 is higher. Okay? I know we haven't followed CDC guidelines since this whole thing started, and as a result, we have seen hundreds of teachers and hundreds of students infected with COVID. Some suffered very serious illnesses. The regulations, the recommendations right now for Forsyth County from the CDC, because cohorts as we define them are not as the CDC defines them. We do not keep students together as a group. They change classes, okay? So the recommendation from CDC, as long as we're at 169 cases per 100,000, is that we should maintain all the recommended mitigation strategies, including six feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny Easter.
I'm sure you're all like, great, what does she have to say this time? Especially knowing I'm kindergarten, and I think the discussion is middle school, high school. But I just want to insert a few things that I'm afraid might get slipped into a vote. But before McManus tells you what her plan is, I want you to think long and hard before you set any motions forward that make even more changes to our classroom world. One little change among any grade level affects us all, and you don't know that. We have all tried to survive this year by the skin of our teeth and tried to adapt to decisions you have made, not truly understanding the situation before us. Us, the educators that have to make it work in the end. Before y'all start talking about taking a step further because teachers have been miraculously vaccinated, which all have not, I want you to take COVID out of the equation this time. As much as you and the public want to preach to us about give the kids grace, look at what they've been through, you've not really provided any for us. We have still had all the pressures and expectations of state mandates and district mandates that were before us, before this whole thing. And though McManus has made it available for central office staff to take over classrooms if it's COVID-19, other than that, we don't have PTA support. They can't come into our classrooms, they can't come into our schools anymore because of regulations and restrictions. So we've not had that. And peers are strapped already with what they're having to deal with anyway. You want to preach we aren't doing our job well enough because of test scores that we know is completely biased and baseless as far as our children showing what they've learned in a normal year, but that's what you want to look at. Perspective, if I may? We have kids in K3 that can barely see the board because even at three-feet distance, they are so spread out around the room to fit more kids inside. It's not working. Fourth and fifth grade classrooms just went back, and they have, they had cohorts of 12 to 13, and realistically, that's how a classroom should look. But now they sit at 25, 25 kids crammed in this classroom that you want to make, say that has all this space. I'm so glad the children are happy that have come back, that's what we want, but you, we are not okay, and I need you to, you need to understand that. The public may balk at me saying this, because yes, I know others in different situations may have it harder, but teacher-staff literally feel like we have PTSD with the anxiety and stress of these constant changes throughout this year, and now you want to make another one, and probably another one, and probably another one. And so help me if you try to recommend Wow Wednesdays be taken from us. It is not a free day. We have PLT meetings, grade-level meetings, we meet with parents virtually, we meet with our students in small groups, we lesson plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Easter. Joshua Zeso.
Good evening, school board members, it's good to see most of you in person, especially welcome to new board member, Mr. Bohannon, and as well, you Superintendent McManus. I'm here actually not to talk about school reopening, I just want to throw my support behind changing policy 9000, which, as we all know, is the policy that has set the start time of the working sessions. So it looks like there's going to be a vote today to possibly change that to 5:30, and I just want to enthusiastically support that change. It'll make it a lot easier for me to be able to attend those, now that I'm going to be able to start attending meetings again, now that I have my vaccine, which I'm really excited about. That's all I wanted to say. I will, I guess one other thing real quick is, I really enjoyed seeing the Women's History Month video, and I would have also really loved to hear from some of the women themselves who serve on this illustrious board, rather than hearing about them. So next time, I hope y'all can be part of the video and speak about how- So next time, I hope y'all can be part of the video and speak about how wonderful of a group you all are. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Rhonda Mays.
Good evening, Chairwoman Woodbury.
Good evening.
The board and Ms. McManus. I am Rhonda Mays, a school social worker here in this district. I'm here to talk to you about reopening. Reopening, reopening, reopening. That's what we felt this whole school year because it's like someone said in a meeting recently, it's like the movie Groundhog's Day. It's like we keep pushing, reset, reset, reset. And we are grateful that those who wanted the vaccine were able to get the vaccine. We're grateful for that. But everyone has not chosen to get the vaccine for whatever reason. So that's another issue. So everyone is not vaccinated. And then we had the issue of parents still having the decision whether or not to send their children back in person, even once a decision is made for whatever plan we're going to be on. So as a social worker, let me just give you a glimpse of what I deal with each and every day. I'm going back to the same houses every week because students are not coming to school who are supposed to be in person. Even though I'm at two elementaries this year and so we know elementary is back full force and we still don't have all of our kids back in school. And those who are online are not necessarily participating online. So I'm doing the same thing repetitively. I'm calling, I'm going to homes and hearing, oh, okay, I'll get them on, I'll get them on. This is what we're going through on the front line, you know? So to say that everyone in the district, I don't know if that's what the discussion was going to be, for everyone in the district to be back full time. But with the parents still having the choice whether or not to send their children back, we are still having the same issue. So please think about, the new year is going to start in a few months and hopefully we won't have a resurgence of cases again, but it looks like we might be heading that way from spring break situations that have been going on in Miami. We have to think long and hard what we're doing because just because the CDC said all of a sudden that three feet is okay, that still doesn't change people's hearts, their fears, and their minds. Please think long and hard about what we need to do for our children. Those who are back, let's continue to work forward and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is discussion items. First, we'll have notice of the yellow bus master finance agreement for purchase by Ms. Lauren Richards, our chief operations officer.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the board.
Good evening.
And Ms. McManus, thank you for having me. So every year, the state of North Carolina sends out information to all of the LEAs across the state to take a poll of how many yellow school buses are, hit their mileage marker to be replaced. As you may know, our yellow school buses are owned by the state. This year, we have twenty-one yellow buses that are up for replacement. And so what you have in your board book this evening is the master finance agreement that the LEA enters into with the bank of the state's choosing and the state will be making those payments on behalf of each of the LEAs across the state. I wanted to share this information with you so that you are aware of it and see if you have any questions with me, for me this evening before we proceed. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have the strategic plan update by Andrew Kraft, Chief Equity and Accountability Officer, and Nathan Craver, our Executive Director of Strategic and School Improvement Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent McManus. I know at this point you all have reviewed the strategic plan. You have approved the strategic plan and so tonight I want to bring you some important updates on the action steps that are being taken to accomplish the strategic plan. What the strategic plan is designed to do is engage the district in continuous improvement. Right? We're never satisfied with the status quo and we always want to continue to improve that. And so tonight I get to introduce to you Nathan Craver. Nathan is our new Executive Director for Strategic and School Improvement Planning. So when dates are set for the strategic planning process and when metrics are reported and schools and leaders are held accountable, Nathan is responsible for that work. You remember that we have an outline of five goals that you've already seen and he's going to talk to you about the specific action steps associated with each one of those goals and these are the action steps specifically for year one that he's going to review. And after tonight, what you'll learn is there are scorecards that will come out that you and the other leaders in the district can use to chart our progress and hold us accountable. So Nathan?
Good evening and I'm excited to be here. Thanks Chairman Woodbury, Ms. McManus, and members of the board. Excited to be here. As you can see, Andy introduced our ability, or part of what we're working on here is this continuous improvement process, which is really around this four-step process around plan, do, study, and act. And so our idea here is that what we want to be able to do is we have the plan, we're in the process of doing and we're studying what's happening and then we're going to take action on those steps as we move forward. As you can see here on the slide, I do come with twenty years of experience. Most recently, I was at the Department of Public Instruction where I serve as a digital learning consultant with a focus on data assessment and continuous improvement where I helped schools and school districts take a look at their data to provide program assessment and move forward in the continuous improvement process. What we're going to do now is to go through each individual goal and then give you a little bit of an update on the work that's been accomplished in this year and will be completed by the end of this school year. So as a reminder, Goal One is focused around student achievement where Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is going to raise student achievement while closing achievement gaps and enable all students to take ownership of their own learning. And so this year, Goal One, the main focus for Goal One for this year was to develop the framework for teaching and learning across the district. This framework has been finalized and shared with schools as well as leaders across the district. Resources and textbooks have been reviewed and procured for all schools. ELA in math specifically were addressed for textbooks and then resources for all subjects. Additionally, we've developed a walkthrough tool where this has been distributed out to principals to help monitor the implementation of the framework to make sure that the framework's being implemented with fidelity and so on. In progress for this year for Goal One, our central office is doing monitoring visits to make sure that the framework's being implemented and that principals have the support that they need. Additionally, instructional personnel are providing professional development. We've at this time offered about two hundred professional development offerings on the framework and then with the expectation of fifty more by the close of the year. We're also constantly reviewing our already data and to monitor our ELA and math progress to make sure our students are on track and that we are working with any students who are, need remediation or extension. And then by the end of the year or by August, we will review EOG and EOC data to help us set goals and to monitor our progress for this year. Goal Two, Goal Two is focused on equitable access to quality instruction where we're trying to eliminate the barriers from, and provide rigorous and diverse opportunities for students. We also want to make sure we're providing quality instructional facilities for each of our children. And so for this year, our big focus has been around discipline. We've created a discipline steering committee and we were in the process of reviewing discipline data to see where we need to make progress, which schools need to make progress and develop a plan to address that. Additionally, we have developed a comprehensive plan for CTE to help address CTE completers and make sure that we're getting folks the credentials that they need. Additionally, elementary IFs and assistant, assistant principals for instruction have been trained on the LIFT program, which helps alternative pathways to AIG so we can increase enrollment in advanced courses. We've also held sessions around participation by minority and women's business, owned women's businesses. Also, all of our pre-K and occupational therapy staff have completed professional learning on implicit bias and cultural proficiency. And then underway for this year, we also have introduced a challenge to increase enrollment in AP courses. This is going on right now, trying to make sure that our AP enrollment does not drop, but also that we're providing more diverse opportunities for our students there. Additionally, we're going to add six middle schools that will begin avid next school year. They will be selected. We're also starting racial equity training. This has begun already for our district. We did groundwater training this month and we will begin in cohorts of training that moving forward. Additionally, we are going to be pulling the socially and emotionally disabled risk ratio for African-American students and monitoring that to try and decrease that disproportionality. And then finally, we're continuing our work on our minority and women's business companies to make sure that we have participation and we have different business opportunities in procurement within the district. And then for Goal Three, we're going to continue this. You can see our goal lead here is Brent Campbell. We're trying to make sure that we're strengthening our partnerships with our families and communities. We know we have a very strong parent engagement in our community, but we want to make sure that we're including all of our parents in this process, so increasing engagement and our stakeholders for all students. In this year, our main goal or what's been completed so far is that Executive Director Mark Batten has been hired. He started in December and a community engagement team has been created. And underway now, we have family engagement that's being measured by our parent guardian participation in both Canvas and Power School. This year, we'll be setting baseline data so that we can begin to measure the increases as we move forward in the following years. Additionally, we have a family engagement survey that will be going out, community newsletters that begin in April. Those will go out three times a year in year one and then increase to six times a year in the subsequent years. Additionally, we are working on defining key objectives for what community engagement will look like and then also developing a school support frequently asked questions to allow community members to understand how they can support our schools and address those needs. Finally, or sorry, Goal Four is our HR goal where we want to recruit and retain a highly effective and diverse workforce that support our district goals. And so we have developed a hiring process to develop a talent pool so that we are hiring the best school-based administrators. Personnel committee has been created to make sure and address any hiring or separation to make sure that those processes are being followed. In addition, underway with this year, we have progress monitoring for our priority staffing plan. We're investigating salary and compensations, which I believe you've heard about at our previous meetings. And then we are also developing new performance evaluations for classified staff as well as onboard and orientation training for new staff, which I just got to experience. So always interested in that. And then central office is also providing support for our hard-to-fill vacancies for our schools where teachers may be moving in and out more often. And then finally, our last goal is around creating a safe and inclusive environment for all students and our staff. And so we heard earlier about social and emotional learning. One of the things that we've done so far is social and emotional learning coordinators have been trained on inclusion and cultural sensitivity. We also have developed a district-level safety and crisis response team. We just rolled out the Panorama Survey. It was just closed, so now, as you can see in progress, we're taking that data to evaluate that. We've also created a service map for health services and support as well as all schools have received MTSS training, which is multi-tiered systems of support to help provide support for students in reaching the core content. Underway, just mentioned this Panorama Survey, but additionally, we're contracting with engaging schools to help support the reduction of suspensions for both students with disabilities and all students. And then finally, we're conducting research of similar school districts to ours to make sure that our discipline policies align.
So Madam Chair, at the end of the year, you can expect to see a scorecard, which will give you a clear measurement of how we've done in accomplishing these goals and we'll be reporting back to you at that time. Are there any questions?
I have a question. We've talked on numerous occasions about the creation of a facility standard for our schools, you know, everything from dishwashers to desks. And it seems that that should be included in the action steps for Goal Two. You know, everything from age and condition of the physical buildings, the systems, equipment. Just wonder why that's missing from there.
Yeah, it's a good question. Thank you. So as you know, Effie McMillan oversees Goal Two, but she certainly works with others. I know Lauren Richards could be the primary contact on that. And so I think the best next step is for me to connect Lauren with Effie and get back to you with an answer on kind of what is the right action step to be included.
And can you tell me the relationship between MWPE participation and student achievement? Because that's listed as an action step and I'm not clear on that.
Right, right, right. No, it's much more of an equity issue rather than a student achievement issue. You're right.
Okay.
I just had a question about the, I guess, the review of the strategic plan. So it looks like we do it one time.
Sure, yeah. No, that's a great question. So at this point, you've reviewed it once. Now we've shared the action steps with you and then the third step will be to share the results with you at the end of the year. So currently, that will be three times within a twelve-month period, right? But we know that we want to give you quarterly reporting as we go forward. That's what we do for our schools and it's appropriate that we do the same thing for our board.
And I would just echo that what Leah was saying. I think the WMBE participation definitely has a place, but I don't know how that aligns to student achievement. And then the facilities piece, you know, I think at some point, if I'm not mistaken, we were on the facility advisory call with Colan, but I don't think Colan's in here. And we were speaking of, there was going to be a, maybe a presentation by Effie and then that would move on to building. I'm just trying to figure out when we will have that and is that the assessment that Board Member Crowley's speaking of?
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's a clear next step for us to get back to you. So I need to get Effie together with Lauren and with Daryl and, yeah, I anticipate getting an answer for you quickly. Thank you.
And one more question about the reporting. We had talked about the typical lifespan of strategic plans and how they tend to get shelved. I'm very concerned about a two-time-a-year reporting because I think that is how it goes to a shelf to die. Would there, have we talked about getting like, having a continuous reporting of it like a dashboard? So that we can constantly see what the goals are and where we are toward those goals?
Thank you, yes. So that exists now. In fact, Nathan is the one that built it and our schools do have it in real time. There are quarterly assessments that they can go and they can look at each of those assessments that align with the district strategic plan. And Nathan, do you want to comment a little bit on that?
Sure. So under that plan, the issue with the current dashboard is our data is eighteen, nineteen data, right? So we do have our last round of data and as new data comes in as a summative assessment, that will get added. One of the things I've been tasked with as part of that dashboard, in addition to just having sort of that autopsy data at the end, is also developing, as you can see here on this slide, is interim measures. So if we're thinking about what is our Math One score is going to be at the end of the year, how can we provide updates via benchmark data and things so on and so forth? I mentioned in the presentation specifically about the SED population and the child count. Those are going to be measured. We update that in December and April. So things like that, we're going to identify when those interim measures can be taken and when the action steps need to be done in order to affect those towards our goal. For example, we just pulled, we're doing high school enrollment right now, so we are pulling AP course enrollment in real time every day and, or every week. And then we're adjusting and providing that information out to our counselors so that we can increase enrollment and make sure we're hitting our goals. And so we'll be identifying when in the calendar year. It makes sense to report that. Those numbers will go into that dashboard, which is live all the time. It's just not ready to go because we don't have the end-of-course data to start putting it out publicly.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I want to thank you for what you're doing for MWPE and women contractors. And I want to thank Daryl and Colan also because, you know, there've been a lot of classes that, you know, people have been able to attend and also, of course, you know, in the spring. And I hope that we can have our construction fair again. But one thing I'd really like to emphasize is hopefully, when we're doing this, we can get our kids really active and involved in this, you know, instead of just maybe having the construction fair. Anything that we can do, since we're doing a lot of building now, new schools are coming up, I think it would be really good if maybe during this time, and I don't know how we would do this for safety or anything like that, that we could stress to our students what we're doing with our bond money for our schools and also maybe try to get them interested. interested in the trades. So I hope that's something that we'll look at. But I do want to thank Darrell and Colin. They've done a great job, and also the contractors that have moved in and started working with us for the MWBE program also. So my hat's off to you. You know, you always want more, but I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. Let's get these kids that aren't college-bound interested in a trade and so that they can move forward also. Thanks.
I just have two quick questions. The first, I think, is for Ms. Grant. When was the framework for teaching and learning completed? I thought that was one of the first things you did when you arrived.
We completed the framework, I would say, by March of 2020, and then took that to teachers' principals for feedback, and then since then have been working on the implementation of it.
Thank you. And then my second question is relative to the goal two slide. I think at one point it said that the discipline data and current policies have been reviewed, but relative to what's the next step relative to those policies, could you provide some more clarity?
Sure. Your next board meeting actually has an agenda item on that specific topic, and so in that meeting, we're going to, we're going to seek your feedback on, first of all, we're going to present the data to you, and then we're going to seek your feedback on some recommendations we have for next steps.
Okay, thank you.
It's a follow-up on that is whenever you, when you do presentations that supports one of these, will you highlight that for us for sure so that we?
Yes.
Kind of have that in our?
Glad you mentioned that. You may see the Lisa, and every agenda item now ties the agenda item to the strategic plan, so that's a great point. We had the same thought. Thank you, Board Member Parker.
And so if you could just, just point that out for some of us that may not remember from two hours ago that we read it.
Maybe it can be added to the agenda.
You have to hear something 13 times, I hear for it, to make it into your, into, you know, your final resting place, so thank you. Appreciate that.
Good expectation for all staff members. Thank you.
It may be added to the actual agenda, maybe put it in parentheses or something so we know what strategic goal.
In the slides itself? Yes, ma'am.
And I would just highlight that, just for clarity, to Board Member Crowley's point around the MWBE piece and its connection to academics, I think that the goal-two summary stresses just around, of course, the academic side, but just equal and equitable access overall in the district. So I think that's how the MWBE piece came in through progress, that it, it wasn't to indicate that it was connected to the academic side. It was just sharing overall where I think the equity office is with, in addition to the academic, some of the other things. I don't want to pretend to speak for Effie, but that's what I assume as I look at the goal-two slide.
And I'm definitely not questioning the importance of it. I'd just like?
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to see more of the action items under goal-two, specifically tied to student achievement, and, you know, the quality instruction and strive to eliminate barriers and rigorous and diverse opportunities, you know, I kind of imply for students in there, like the second sentence has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The next discussion item is the Policy 9000 Bylaws by Deion Jenkins, our General Counsel.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Board Members, and Superintendent McManus. My update for you tonight will be short and sweet. And so as you recall, in December of 2019, you approved changes to your bylaws, and as a part of those changes, we collapsed our meeting structures for your standing committee meetings. And so instead of having two regular board meetings and then multiple committee meetings, the standing committees were collapsed into a work session, which is, took the place of the first regular meeting, and then you kept your second regular meeting. And setting the times for those meetings, the regular board meetings were set to begin at 5:30, and the work sessions were set to begin at 5:00. And so the proposal tonight is to make those times consistent and to have the start of the work sessions also begin at 5:30 to be consistent with the start of the regular board meetings. And also, I think, just based off some of the feedback you heard today, that might make it a little easier for families to be able to participate in those meetings. And then lastly, in light of the previous discussion about the strategic plan, this recommendation is aligned with goal number three, which is your community engagement, strengthen partnership, and increase communication for families goal. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Yeah, when I started on this board, our committee meetings were starting at 4:00. And then, can you tell me what time, what average time we're ending meetings that, on the work session days? Is it like 9:00 or 10:00 at night?
Probably around between 8:30 and 9:00, I would say.
Yeah, and that's my concern about starting later, is it keeps going, you know, we're not making the meetings any shorter, and I think that's hard on families to, you know, to have these meetings going till 10:00 at night or later.
I also would say to Board Member Crowley's point, the difference also is that before you had, at the beginning, at 4:00, you had two committee meetings, as opposed to us having all of them on one day, which packs it even more together and makes it go a little later. I understand what the impetus was for the move, but I would say that that's kind of what you ended up with.
I think it's really hard for those that are working, which I am one of, and, you know, to not get home until 10:00, 10:30, sometimes, I guess, quarter of 11:00, and then you got to get up and get in early, early that morning with a full day, and some of us don't work just straight 8:00 to 5:00. You know, some of us are there until late at night. So, I mean, I think that's pushing the button a little bit, if you ask me.
I think that maybe, you know, the board can work with the superintendent during our agenda review to kind of look at all that is going to be discussed in a session to see if we can make sure that we're not maybe going into, you know, four and a half, five hours so that we can start at 5:30 and expect, you know, a time where it's reasonable for us to leave. So I guess that's another way to look at it, that we can just try to work with the superintendent to see what's actually on the agenda.
And I think Ms. Mott Singer has her hand raised.
Yes, thank you.
Can I make a comment? This is Elizabeth.
Yes.
My comment is that it might be useful for us to be available, say, every other month for a third Tuesday, so the third week Tuesday at 5:00, to do deeper dives, because I think often what makes our meetings go so long is that there's a topic that really does deserve a great deal of conversation and attention. And I would, you know, really think that if we kept our, the third Tuesday of the month at 5:00 or 5:30 and did deeper dives so we could spend perhaps two hours on a topic that's really deserves the attention, it might be easier to do the work in committee meetings in a sort of more efficient manner. So I would love for us to actually take some time to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, and to piggyback on Elizabeth's point, do we need to say anything about that in the bylaws? Does that need to be a bylaw change that if, that a second work session date would be scheduled at a different time, or would we just do that on an as-need basis?
Well, that's, that's actually up to you all. If you would like for it to be a standing meeting every month, I would recommend making that change to the bylaws, or you could call it on a special called as-needed basis whenever it's needed.
I think it, I think it will be needed at times, because, you know, we used to have a cutoff rule, a four-hour rule, that, you know, if we went past, we just cut, that was it. We had to come back later and finish, because everybody's pretty done at that point, and I know why I am, in three, three and a half, you know, so.
We do still have the 10:00 rule.
Okay, okay, good. Well, we went past it the other night, so. We didn't adhere.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, in the past, I don't, we haven't, we didn't do it then, but I've met with them, been times that we had to call for a vote to go past it, so that's kind of how we had dealt with it in some years past.
I would just say that we need to, to make sure that we, that we do give enough time to each discussion item, so we don't cut anything short, but at the same time, we have a plan, and I don't know whether that's just on an as-need basis or whatever, but I definitely think that we need to, to make sure that the public can participate, but at the same time, that the board members, we are at our best, and that we get all of our questions and have our, you know, the time that we need to, to look at things, so.
Absolutely.
Ms. McManus, I did see earlier, I didn't know if you wanted to?
No, I was just, it was at the same time that Chair Woodbury made her comment, that we can definitely, there have been items that have been more updated in nature that don't need to be on that agenda. It does need to be topics that go deeper with a discussion, and so we can, we'll definitely work on the agenda together to shorten it as much as possible, keep it very meaningful, and be the most relevant items that need actual discussion.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is the 2021-2022 Calendar Recommendation by Tricia McManus, Superintendent.
So we have been waiting for, to come back to the group with a calendar, because we were waiting to see if legislation would change on a different start, and that still has not gone through, but we went ahead. We need to make a decision so that our families can move forward with their planning, and our staff can move forward with planning, and so we've bought some recommendations back tonight. I will tell you, the calendar, let me, let me give you a few priorities that were addressed when Mr. Mills actually presented this the last time. These were some of the priorities that folks wanted. I'm not going to read them to you. You can see what they were at the time. Here were some guidelines that we had to follow. So you can see that's outlined for us, what we have to include. And something else, let's see if I had one more side. No, that was it. And so something else, we'll bring up the calendars in a minute, but something else I wanted you to know is, as we talked with staff, you know, I was really pushing for an earlier start, but when we look at our summer school deadline, this, the timeline this year, we're actually, summer school's going to end July 29th. And so when you think about that, if teachers want to teach summer, they need a break in between summer and when we come back for pre-planning. And so when staff met early this week, even, we were, we thought, you know what, that early start is not going to even work this year. Let's just go ahead and stick with the start, which is the first Monday closest to August 26th. So I'm going to show you a calendar now that's, that supports what was listed. I will tell you when it was first presented. Go ahead and just bring up the student one. So when this calendar was first presented, okay, I just lost my train of thought. Let me just keep going, and then I'll remember what I was about to say. But, but basically, oh, yes, it was imbalanced, and we got a lot of feedback from staff after that, teachers, that that imbalance was not going to be effective. It was pretty imbalanced, and that was an attempt to try to get exams before winter break. I can tell you with our late starts, that's why I wanted to start early, was to get exams before winter break. If we can ever do that in our state, that would be awesome, but right now, with the start date that we have, it is impossible unless you short-change the first semester. So the semester, tonight's calendar, just so you know, this one, is actually balanced. It's 90 days first semester, 90 days second semester. If you look at this calendar, so the nine weeks are in different colors, and you can see like the week of this, August 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, that's non-student time, because this is specifically a student calendar, but that would be when staff would return for pre-planning. And, you know, one of those days would be a training day by the district, but many of those days will be, they need time in their rooms to get ready, and their own site-based types of meetings. So other things to highlight here, obviously, September 6th is a holiday for kids. It's, it's Labor Day, right? Labor Day? Labor Day. If you go to October, the other thing built in, whenever you see a day, like the October 25th, that is a day that the nine weeks ended on the 22nd, so it's a teacher workday to do grades, get ready for the next nine weeks. And so that's, we built that in like we have in the past into each, each quarter. If you look in November, something that folks really wanted is that students, that is trying to give students that week of Thanksgiving off versus coming in one or two days. So we actually added that in. That was a minor change. The only other big, the only other changes in this calendar that you'll see besides that one were that instead of ending nine weeks on a Tuesday and then having a teacher workday on a Wednesday, it's, in my opinion, and folks I've run this by, it's very disruptive to have the middle of the week. I know this year we're doing it, and we had good reasons for the Wednesday instead of the Friday, so that's not what I'm talking about, but in a regular school year, to be able to have kids in school four days in a row and then have teachers able to have that workday, that was also a change that we made. So in the other calendar, they were like Wednesdays where they were workdays. So in this case, like the October 25th one is a Monday, so then kids would come four days in a row. So it's less, it's just less disruption. And then, so when you go to December, we would go into the first two weeks of, the first two days of that winter break, the 20th and 21st would be student days, and then they would have actually two weeks, because you'll go to January 4th. If you look at January 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, obviously, the 3rd was still a day off, and the 4th would actually be a teacher R, an R-day there. And that is so that teachers can prepare now, because if we've been gone for two weeks, just make sure we're, we're ready for students' return. So the semester would end, the 17th is a Martin Luther King holiday, and that nine weeks would end on the 20th to give, again, the end of the week. And I know that's two days in one week, but it keeps Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday together, and that would be the end of the nine weeks for grades, because the 17th, again, is a holiday, so nobody works on that day. So then purple is the third nine weeks. That goes from January into February, and then it goes into March as well. Now, March 4th would be a, an R-day, as there again for staff, and same with the 25th. The 25th is the end of the nine weeks. The 4th is added there for a, either RS or RC day. It's another, it's a training day, kind of that last one of the school year. And then you can see in the green would start the fourth nine weeks, and that will take us home. Spring break would come during the week of April 11th. I know this was one of the requests, so Good Friday is the 15th that, next year, the 16th is, is a Saturday, the 17th is Easter, and we gave one extra day in there for people to get back and to, to get reacclimated. And then our last nine weeks would continue on into June. June 9th would be the last student day, with the 10th and the 13th are two days of post-planning for teachers. So again, this is the student version. The teacher version has, you know, their days coded for what are holidays and what are leave days and all of those other coatings. But that's, I'll open up for questions now and thoughts. Again, the highlights of this are balanced semesters, R-days closer to weekends so that we are not interrupting learning during the week, Thanksgiving week off for students and families, the R-day at the end of the nine weeks to support grading and preparation, and then still having district, you know, training days throughout the calendar. So those are some of the highlights of the student calendar.
Are there any state-required remote days like there were in this past year?
Not that we have been told.
Okay.
For this year.
And will schools still have the flexibility to bring certain groups back at the beginning of the year?
Like, like orientations and things like that?
Yeah, like doing kindergartners the first, you know, some of, some schools do that, or like, I know, I heard from a lot of principals this past year, high school principals who really liked having freshmen back and just the freshmen for however long.
Yeah. So they, they, if you could, can you scroll, Kevin, go up to July real quick? So they, if you could, can you scroll, Kevin, go up to July real quick? So schools can do, so again, remember, so summer programming, which is going to be in almost every high school and in many more schools than in the past, because we're opening it up to many more students, it'll end on July 29th. Teacher, the return of teachers for pre-planning is August 16th. So there's a two-week window there. If schools want to plan things and their parent community and their families and teachers and staff are on board, all the staff are on board, they could do that in the first two weeks of August. Or they could, you know, plan a special ninth grade something during the week of the 16th. I mean, that would definitely be something, if that's what you're asking. There's not a ton of time there because of going for a five-week summer program. But they could. Other questions about the student? Any concerns or?
I'm surprised to see a whole week off at Thanksgiving. And that was something people, did we survey and get a lot of requests?
People that would like that, yeah. And I, and I met with the smaller committee of principals as well, just to, again, run it by. And they were, they thought it would be really good for, it's something that folks would really look forward to for that week. All right, so really quickly, Kevin, if you would go to the, so the staff calendar that accompanies the student calendar, these calendars get, to me, get very confusing. But, and actually, the 16th and the 17th would also be pre-planning, which would end up being RS, so we need to fix that. But you can see the week of the 16th, the Monday and Tuesday would be RS, Thursday, Friday would be RS, and then a day for the, and RC is that reserved for staff with training, reserved by central office versus reserved for schools. When it's RS, schools can plan what happens. And again, teachers will need time to come back and get their classrooms ready for the new school year. H is a holiday in September. If you keep scrolling down, October, you can see the RS day for, the workday for teachers on the 25th. You can then see November. And then December, you can see the time off. Again, those codes are, I'm learning a lot on coding about how people, things have to be coded here for other L-days or B-days or RS-days or H-days. But basically, teachers have those same two weeks off. They have the, on January, the Tuesday, kids are not in there on January 4th, but that is a training, one of our training days. There are three training days that we have for all staff during this school year. And then you can look and see, again, the RC and the RS day. And then if you scroll up, you can see the holidays. And then you can see at the end, it actually, and we got to make, we got to double-check on this one too, but the 10th and the 13th would be those final days. I didn't think we could do a third, but we'll double-check on that one too. So it's pretty basic. It supports the student calendar. And it just shows the time off that our adults have as well, that our employees have as well.
When is open house? When would open house be?
Open house, if, Kevin, can you scroll up to August? So the back-to-school open houses would be the week of the 16th. They're always the week before kids come back, during the week that teachers and staff are back on campus.
Okay, so when, so when would, when would teachers need to come back?
Teachers come back on the 16th.
Okay, so they would come back on the same day of orientation? Or, I'm confused.
No, do you mean open house for students?
Yes.
So normally, open house usually would fall later in the week, like a Thursday.
Okay.
And so teachers having room and time in their classrooms to get their rooms ready, time for staff to come together to do vision setting, goal setting, celebrations, look at our data, all those things that we do during pre-planning. And then open house usually would fall later in the week.
Okay, I just want to make sure they have the prep time they need.
Yeah, I, yes. I mean, trust me, I think we need two weeks of pre-planning, but then nobody would have a break. I would have gone more pre-planning, but people would not literally have a break if they chose to teach summer program. And we want people to be able to do that if they choose to do that. And not just teach, by the way, I'm saying teach for all of this. It's also the, all the other employee groups that would be following the same, the same calendar. All right, so the next one is Inspire, let's pull up Inspire 340. And I know Dr. Roseborough is on the line. The difference with Inspire 340 is they actually do come back sooner. That's part of their plan. And they have a few more days built out for staff training. But we can scroll through. And Dr. Roseborough, I know you're on Teams. I don't know if there's anything you specifically want to highlight about the calendar that would be important as the board's looking at it?
Yes, our open house will probably be on the 12th, which is the Thursday before the 19th. Our students will come back on the 16th.
Any other highlights that you'd like to share?
And I believe we, I think we have an additional workday in February, if you could scroll down to February.
Yeah.
Because we're coming back earlier, it'll be a stretch for us. So we've included a workday in February, which is different from the district calendar, which would be February 25th.
Okay.
And I think that that's it. I think, other than that, we stay pretty consistent with the district.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last one. The last one is early and middle college. And that one goes along, I believe, with the university cat foresight calendar. So that one, you can see, we just support that calendar. All right, so those are the four calendars. We believe we've taken feedback and given a calendar that actually feels like the breaks are in the right place, that the, you know, that learning is not broken up during weeks, that the end of nine weeks fall at a reasonable spot. And so I hope that people will be excited by this calendar.
Thank you, Ms. McManus. I think your, the last discussion item is also, you're leading with the reopening of the schools update.
Yes. So this is a very, a quick update on where we are and where we're going. And I, and I will say, I want to address the confusion because I feel, you know, ownership of the confusion of the discussion item being added at the last minute. We did, we should have had a discussion item every time. And when I reviewed the agenda last week, I didn't even, I was going a mile a minute, didn't even pay attention that it wasn't on there, and realized yesterday, early, that I really need to give an update about where we are and where the whole state really is in other districts, because I'm on regular calls. And so I added it at the last minute. So that was by no me, that was my fault. And I just wanted to put that out there because it should have been added last week, the discussion item. And so basically, just so you can see where we are. So here, all of our elementary students that choose to be, and I want to preface this entire update with, it is choice for families still. And even when districts are talking Plan A, because many districts are moving Plan A, it's been happening for two weeks, ever since the governor made his announcement. Most of them still do have the option of the remote learner at home. And we are one of those districts that has kept that option. So all students that have chosen to be back face-to-face at elementary are back in four days a week with Wednesday as a flex day. I have done a lot of talking about flex day. I know it's been a conversation, it's come up with several folks. I will tell you, with concurrent instruction still happening across our district, it is very much needed. It is, it is a day, and it is a day of planning for both concurrent, for the remote learner and the in-person learner. It is also a day where teachers are planning together. They are meeting in teams. They don't have time, you know, I don't know how we've done it in the past. I always feel like teachers don't have enough time to plan. And if you want really good instruction, four days a week, that is top-notch instruction, having that day is critical. I visited Jefferson Elementary Friday or Monday, I can't remember. Monday, Monday. They had a motivation Monday, and I've visited every single classroom and talked to the principal. And they also do small group, a lot of small groups on that Wednesday. A lot of the principals that I have spoken to and teachers, I just ask people, tell me what you think, as I'm passing them. They find a lot of value in that day. And I think that more gets done in that day to be prepared for our learners than people actually realize. And so I think, it's funny, because the state, a lot of the districts have kept that day. If they started with that day, they've all kept it. If they didn't start with that day, they haven't added it. So like, to compare to other districts, those that have it, every one of the superintendents I've talked to have just continued to keep that day. So it's four days. So just wanted to say that that is something I feel, I do feel very passionate about. So in our middle schools, all of our schools except the three that could not go to the night that we made the decision, they are still in four cohorts, but are working day by day to bring back more and more students. But right now, that's where we're with middle school. And high schools have remained in their four cohorts. But as you all know, because we approved it on, at one of our board meetings, April 12th, we were reducing it to two cohorts. So that's where we are now, all right? So let's see, let's move the slide. Here's kind of our enrollment. And so this is the percent of students that are actually back in person. And the others are still remote. When I go into elementary classrooms, I see more students in person and fewer on the screen. When I go into middle and high school, it's the opposite. It's not, it's few students in the classroom and more students on the screen. And 59%, even when I was reading that today, I was like, that seems high because I am seeing really low numbers in our high school classrooms. I'm seeing three and four kids and, but that is across the board, what we're showing right now for in-person. So altogether, there's about 67% of our students that are, that have chosen in-person, and the others are still are remote. So here is the Senate bill. So what caused, you know, when people say about making changes and that, why do we keep making changes? Yes, this has been a year of change. It's been a year of change because as you know more, you make new decisions. As you learn more, you make new decisions. And so, you know, two weeks ago, when we, I brought up, could we go to two cohorts? Which we got great support for that, for high schools. That was when our governor and our, the legislation had not been passed. It was that you needed to stay in Plan B or C for grade six through 12. I mean, that was the mandate, that was the expectation. And so since then, the reason a lot of districts very quickly went back to their boards, and many have done it prior to now, it's because of the new legislation and the new guidance that came out. The toolkit that we've been following all year, we've been following the toolkit to a T, that changed today, just so you know. So in other words, I think people need to understand, it's not like, oh, we love change and we want to change and change and change. But as you get more guidance, as you get more expectations coming from the state and coming from our governor, and then the CDC then kind of supported some of that as well, that's why districts have come back to the table, have called special called board meetings, have come back. That's the reason, because they're getting more information about now. The ABC Collaborative is part of this partnership with districts. And we are already a partner with the ABC Collaborative. We have been the whole time, and they've been guiding a lot of the work the whole time. Our local epidemiologist, Dr. Ohl, who we've also been using, he actually, to tell you all, is actually very conservative on this end of, on the high school end right now. You know, he has been very much about, let's not reverse the good work that's been done. We're getting down in our numbers with community spread, it's decreasing. Let's not, you know, that, the group of students, he has said, the group of students is older and behaviors are different. And so he just said, you know, whatever districts are doing, his advice was, you know, don't just forget all the work that's been done around all the safety protocols. And also, don't just go back to everything being normal, like the way you approach lunch and specials, classes and all that, that you really need to still maintain.